Can I create a roll call, please, Terry?
Nancy Danhoney?
Here.
Roger Smith?
Here.
Nicole Cullen?
Here.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Joe Navarreta?
Here.
And please stand for closing revisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion for review and acceptance of the agenda for this session?
I'm going to give review and accept the session for this agenda.
Sure.
Agenda for this session.
Okay, Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nancy Danhoney?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes.
Roger Smith?
Yes.
Joe Navarreta?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to review the proposed agenda for the September 20 meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Diana.
Very good. So if you refer to the agenda under item one, we have our routine items under 1.6. We will be recognizing Cavalry Baptist Church for all of the work that they've done at our sites. They were not able to be here last time. We also will be recognizing the contributors to the Starline Painting Project. While Sherwin-Williams did donate the paint, there were also several vendors who donated their labor, so we're going to recognize those. At that meeting, we will be welcoming our new elementary teachers, and then we will get our annual update on the AZ Merit results from Mr. Gardner. So that will be a presentation. We can anticipate that's going to be a little bit longer than just a few minutes, so. And then, of course, our, like, Academy School Education Association. Under the action items on the consent calendar, we have the minutes. Those were two sets of minutes here from our regular session on August 16th and the work session on August 9th. Do we have any questions or revisions to the minutes? I also would like to note that in the three pages and or so, what you will see is the 16, 17 beginning balance for all of our student activity plans. So we have our elementary, middle school, and then high school, which has a very arista extracurricular activities. And then finally, the closing balance, 15, 16, for all of our classes and fee-based programs at high school. So that is in this. Actually, it's for the high school and the middle and elementary schools as well. Item 5 is our gifts and donations, which we will highlight at the end. Item 6 is the student wellness policy. This is coming forward with no changes from the last meeting.
The only change in that is the change in the statute that we can grow vegetables and cut them and eat on the spot.
Yes, that's it. Provision for if you have a garden. Item 7 is relating to the special session that will be held prior to the meeting, and that is for a settlement agreement. And that concludes the consent calendar. Item 4.1 is the second reading and approval of the community use of facilities, and this item was one that changed so that the governing board and the employees and agents are named as insured under the liability policies for those who use our facilities. I'm just rambling right on through. Item 5 dot 1, this is a National Honor Society event, and this one is requesting permission for this group to travel to Denver for the LEAD conference, which is in November, and that does align with the Veterans Day holiday, so that they don't miss too much school there. Item 2 is for the Honor Society to attend the Skills, Youth Leadership Skills event at Disney in March.
They've gone to that before, haven't they?
I believe so. Item 3, and this is for the graduating seniors to travel to Anaheim. You'll notice that they will be returning on the same day. They're actually doing a turnaround for a graduation trip.
They've done that the last three years, too.
And then item 4 is the WAVE contract that's coming forward. This contract is a five-year contract, and so the last one has expired, so now we bring back the contract again. And this goes through the detail of where our agreement is with the vocational education program. And then when you reach the end of the contract, it does give you information about the one year budget for 16, 17. So that's an annual budget. We don't have one extending beyond that. You certainly can provide detail. And then also attached in here is the list of the programs that are currently, our sequence programs that are funded through WAVE.
Have we expanded this at all since? Because I know we added this.
Yes.
We added some of this on business a couple of years ago, but then I don't know if we did anything else.
Yeah, so the largest thing that has been added is the Educators Rising. So if you look over under our Social and Human Services, it has the CTSO, FCCLA, and Educators Rising group. So that is a new program. Let me see if there's something else that's on here.
That's the Grow Your Own program?
Yes.
Yes, so Educational Professions, so that's some new funding. And then we also had some funding added in this year to update the computer lab for the Business, BMAS.
Not that smart.
No, 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 but it's listed here as BMAS, so, yes. So that computer lab is being updated in this budget as well. And there also is some built into this budget for some increased technology and furniture within all of the programs. One of the requirements in CTE is that they keep up with the industry standard, and so if, you know, over the course of time, programs change, so they have to upgrade software
Denise, I guess this would be directly to, we don't have a drafting program up there anymore, right?
No.
And was that primarily because it's so difficult to get a person in there?
Well, interestingly, you know, we lost Brian Aringuena, and then the following year, the CTE umbrella itself moved away from drafting, and they're going into another direction with the pre-engineering.
Oh, okay.
So they've changed the titles a little bit.
Oh, okay. All right.
And I think that CAD is part of the pre-engineering, isn't it?
The computer-assisted drafting?
It can be, yes. There's several items that are underneath that.
Okay.
But it's not drafting as we knew it when Brian was here.
All right.
Any other questions? Item 5.5 is the language that's been added for the parental involvement policy and also the school attendance areas. So we have added and deleted statutory language. In the attendance areas, you can see the language that has been deleted. And then under the parent involvement, on page 3 of 5, are some suggested language to be added as the board determines. Item 5.6 is a revision of the two policies, again, the weapons in school and the smoking on premises. In the weapons in school policy, the law has been clarified that we cannot prohibit the lawful possession or carrying of a weapon on a public right-of-way with, by a person who has the right to do that. So a public right-of-way is defined in here, and that is any street, road, highway that is maintained by the state or the city. So that still takes campuses off, which they aren't allowed, but the street in front of a school, you would not be able to issue it. That's the clarification that is in this one. And then on the tobacco one, that one is completely deleted because of the new statute that Arizona is smoke-free. Item 5.7 is the, is a new policy on the relations with educational research agencies. And what is added to this, the new statute, ARS 15-117, which we'll talk about in an additional policy later, and what this is a statement saying that we will comply with that statute under the research piece of it.
So let's chat about this one, because I need to fully understand this one. Because I had big concerns a couple of years ago, starting a couple of years ago, about collecting this kind of information in surveys, and I was assured, well, we don't do that. And lo and behold, we have a policy that I didn't know we had until this came up. So under what situation, or can you give me an example, anybody, of what kind of educational purpose or partner would be asking these kind of questions of our kids? Anybody?
Well, I know that the high school and middle school are giving a survey every other year, and it's a survey where they ask students, and I believe it's the 11th and 12th graders at the high school level, where they were taking an anonymous survey where they were asking them about tobacco use, alcohol use, drug use, and that there, and there's a cooperative that is at the state level that uses that information, that they collect across the whole state to collect that aggregate information. Who's collecting that? I can't think off the top of my head who that group is, because I haven't done it since I was at the high school. But it is, it is a state-level group. I can tell you that tomorrow.
Okay. So then the parents would have to give approval for them to complete that?
The parents would have to give approval for them to complete this, yes.
Not at the beginning of the year, but before the survey was taken?
Correct.
Yes, before the survey. There's also, and we're going to get to the other policy that talks about all of that, but what will happen also is sometimes the educational institutions will have a research study that they're doing, and they'll request that districts participate so they can gather information. And so the first step would be, does the district even agree to participate? And then if they do, then the next level would be going to the parent permission piece.
So how does that process work? If an educational institution wanted to use our students to participate, would that come up through the board, or would that be made?
Typically, it would come to the superintendent. And I have, I don't know that our policy says that we would bring that to the board. In most cases, the, I can't speak for here because I haven't seen it here, but in most cases, if, if it's not something that is instructional in nature, we typically don't pursue that, so, for the research purposes. I don't, I can't, I don't know about the, there are some on drug use, but most of them, those would be statewide kind of agencies, usually middle health agencies or things like that. What I've seen are, how do you think of a good example? One of the ones that I participated in, in Haruka School District, was on the effects of retention. And so what they asked was to, if they could study by student identifier, student performance over the course of years if they had been retained in a certain grade. And so that's an example of something that a research institution might be looking at.
Were you going to say something? No.
Would you have to do this if, let's say you wanted to have a climate survey of the school, you know, just the attitudes, parents and members of the community and students, would you still have to do something like this? You know, sometimes those can be very important, just that, you know, the institution thinks it's going along real well, it might be, but it gets, gives feedback to the administration and to the district so that they can make adjustments. Now, are you going to have to have parental approval or something like that?
No.
Okay.
The, there, it's very, very well described in the new regulation that the conditions for the parent permission is twofold. If we're going to keep the information for over a year, and if we're going to ask questions that fall into a certain category, and those are listed specifically.
Right, and those are the things I have a problem with.
Right, which are the ones you raised concerns about before. The response we got was that we weren't allowing any surveys that collected any of that information.
Right, and I just wanted to be clear about that, because that's my big concern. So we can still take surveys of the, the climate of the school district without asking them about their sex behaviors and attitudes. That has nothing to do with the climate of the school district.
The churches that they go to.
Right, whether they have guns or ammo in their house, et cetera.
It's Arizona, 95% of people do.
That's right.
As someone who does home visits, it's common. Do they reach the door with their firearms?
Yes. So when we get to 5.10, that one is getting into more of the detail of that. All right, 5.8 is the extracurricular activity eligibility. Again, this is another one that's a change in statute, and this one is in relation to we cannot prohibit a pupil from wearing a religious or cultural accessory or hairpiece while participating in an activity unless it's a danger.
I think this came up, up at Winslow, and a Hopi girl was playing basketball, and they traditionally will have a bun, and I think that became the issue. And probably that could have been resolved if the official would just say, look, that's, if they had known something about the Navos or the Hopes and all that, and they would have recognized that, hey, this is just part of that. So I think that's where this came from.
Makes sense.
I will say one thing. It says students who have not having their work checked on a cumulative basis at each of one week period. I want to let you know that Lake Hamilton High School led the way in this years ago. We've always had a one-week eligibility period, and there were only two schools in the state. We were one of them, and there was another one, I think down in the southeastern part, that did this. So it's good to see that the state has caught up with us.
Item 5.9 is our permission of homeless students policy, and this adds a statement, again, per statute, that allows us to give preference for enrollment if a student is in foster care, so that they don't have to move schools. Would mention here that foster students are now added to the group of students that will be tracked via the ESAT Act, and the state will provide, will do that, not at the local level. So if you hear about that, that's somewhere. Okay, 5.10 is the student surveys. So the, there have been some extensive additions to statute in relation to student surveys and parental permission, and those statutes are listed here as well, and 15-117 is a brand-new section completely. So one of the things they've done in this statute is they've defined non-test. So anytime we're collecting non-test data is when the supply is, and the, when, if it's not relating to the student's knowledge or skills in the content areas of reading, writing, math, social science, you know, science, et cetera. So it's, it's not course-related or instruction-related. And so they, there's a couple of things that they do. They prohibit the inclusion of longitudinal non-test data in any of the state reporting unless the State Board of Education approves it at a state board meeting and posts on their website what non-test data they are going to collect. Okay, so there should be no non-test data being collected unless it's posted on the ADE website. Then the second part that it does is it describes the duties of school districts in relation to student surveys and what data they can collect or not collect, and what, what the criteria are for that. So the policy itself, you'll notice, is just some new language that talks about student surveys and annual notification, and it basically says we're going to follow the education code, or, excuse me, the Arizona revised statute. On the next page after that, I included for you the Arizona revised statute, the 15-117, that is the new statute. And if you look at that, the first page on section A, it says that we will obtain written informed consent from the parent of a pupil before administering a survey that is retained for longer than one year and that solicits personal information regarding any of the following. And there is a list of 14 items that you would have to get permission if you were going to collect any data about that.
Can you read those 14 items, and why would you have any interest in collecting that data?
I, we don't have any interest in collecting that data.
Then why isn't the policy that the district won't do it, period?
Because it's state statute?
No, the state says you have to give permission, doesn't say you have to participate. I've got the statute right here, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. But I just want to clarify, because, so, is the loophole that, is there a loophole that if you're not keeping it for longer than a year?
I think that could be a loophole, yes.
Yeah, so that concerns me. I would like to see our district make some sort of effort in addition to this, to include in the policy, so, because this is stunning when you read through this list. Maybe not for the people that work in the district that are used to working with kids, and these things are all maybe normal to you, but when the public reads through this, it's shocking that anybody would be asking anybody under the 18 some of these questions. So I would like to see our district go further, because that does seem like a loophole, and what else seems like a loophole is the annual notification. So while here in the statute, it says that you need written informed consent, it says at the beginning of the school year. So does that get buried in the packet that everybody just signs because that's what they do? They just flip and sign and sign and sign? I would like to make sure that we're very specific, that should we partner with somebody, and should one of these questions come up, that we are going to inform individually at the time that this is what we're asking, especially for these 14 listed here, because, because that's what I would like to see.
And the statute says that parents can opt out at any time, even if they've given consent?
Yes, I know.
I think there's another problem you need to look at. The state has given you permission to do that. The state, by doing that, has gotten rid of all of its liability. The moment you do it and your parent sues, the school district's going to be looking at the suit, because the state didn't tell you you had to do it, it said you could do How many of these surveys did we have last year? Anyone know?
See, I don't think that the statute covers this.
No, 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 I just want to know. I don't believe in making, I, you know, it can be a problem, but if there were no surveys conducted, I mean, I'm not as, we can make those, we can take care of that. But I just wanted to know, were there any surveys done last year that would fall into this category at all?
The two.
The only one I'm aware of is the one, like I said earlier, that they did at high school.
But I don't think this talks or speaks to any of the surveys that might be conducted through the plethora of online resources that we use that people are completely unaware of. You know, when we're encouraging kids or students or parents, classrooms, to use this software or that software, we're not experts on everything they're doing, and we don't know what's being collected through those avenues either, and it's going to get worse. I understand what you're saying. What have we collected so far? But this technology is happening so fast, nobody can keep pace with it, and they bank on that, and it's concerning for a lot of people.
What you're saying is that the technology we use, that they might survey kids?
Absolutely, oh, without question.
That was the fear with the kiosks.
Yeah, without question.
Would that be, could that be done during school? Couldn't that be stopped during school time?
That could be done without a teacher even knowing that it's happening, is my point.
You could have a kid in ISS in front of a computer doing homework online surreptitiously on something else, taking a survey without anybody's knowledge.
So he'd go on?
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't be something that, that was being required, it would be something that he would be doing that runs counter to our, our, our policy on computers.
You're, you're correct, but flip that over for a minute. If you're against it as a policy for a student on a computer in the ISS room, why are you not against it from a vendor coming in asking you to conduct the survey of your students?
I'm not against that. I'm, I'm saying that I don't have a problem if we don't have that, but I don't see how the school district, if a kid goes, if he violates our computer policy and he goes on something.
No, and I, and I agree with you.
I mean, that, you can't cover every avenue, is what I'm saying.
You're, you're, you're right, but, but what we're saying is that as the technology advances, the ability to sneak a survey in somewhere or, or response information to gather biometric data surreptitiously within the couching of a test, that becomes a real question of, of, does this repetitive question series bring up these, these little humps and bubbles within looking at test data?
So you're saying if the test was administered?
Sure.
And, and the school acknowledges that test, but, but do we test like that? I, I know when I was at the high school, we created our own test.
Well, we don't, Jenny, we don't know what the test looked like, do we?
What tests are we referring to?
Well, okay.
Because I don't know of any system that we use that allows a company to ask permission to give a survey off the top. Perhaps, I'm not aware of it.
Say that again.
Brad, you're creating a policy moving forward.
Right.
You're, you're not creating a look back, you're creating a policy.
Let's get that.
Go ahead.
What did you say?
Okay, rephrase your question.
I, I didn't have a question.
Somebody asked a question about what, what tests are we offering, or do we, do we supply right now that, that opens up that possibility? I'm not aware of that.
Oh, I did ask. I asked if you had seen AZ Merit, the actual tests.
I had looked through the AZ Merit. I did not see any surveys.
I mean, I wasn't insinuating there was. I was just under the impression that nobody was allowed to look at the AZ Merit test, so.
Well, no, I haven't actually seen the, the real test. I mean, but as far as the survey goes, there was not anything attached. That's from the state. That would be superintendent, public construction.
Right, right, right.
Well, I'm also hearing two things here. I'm hearing the, the IT part of it, the controls over what's coming in through systems that kids could access without anybody knowing it. But this, I also see this policy being more directed toward, unless I'm reading it wrong, more toward formal research, so like a university would request to do, a graduate student's doing a study on some education that they want to kind of... education and they want to come in and do it and it's up to the district to say whether they will or will not within the criteria.
I think you're right on point with that. And I think that the...
And they're both important. I'm just saying I'm not sure that what you're bringing up is this policy or whether that's in, is somewhere else.
But I think on that policy right there, you're making the problem too big. If it says, the state says you can ask about a parent's gun ownership, all they have to do, has to say is, "We will not buy policy, ask that question." It's real simple. When you cut the policy, you take the questions on there that people don't approve of and you say, "Within this district, we will not ask those questions."
See, I don't, I don't think it's that, I disagree. I don't think it's that simple. Let me just say that, remember, does anybody remember reading recently, within the last two years, about Google Chrome and all the stuff that they were collecting through their Chromebooks? Did anybody read any of those stories? They were collecting information unbeknownst to the districts, the teachers, the parents, anybody. That's what I'm concerned about. And when I think about the different free resources that we use, even though I know now that, you know, the department has done their due diligence and they're really trying to vet out and determine what we're using, we're using so many resources, there's nobody in this district that can guarantee me that we're not, that our kids aren't taking surveys on those free resources, which would not be breaching any of the student contract using technology. The idea that this is coming before us, I just want our district to make it clear to our community, not only are we not creating these ourselves, we do not approve of asking these questions. Now, we can't stop that from happening, should it happen through technology, but to say that we, as a school district, are not okay with these kind of questions being asked of our students goes a long way to build trust in our community and assure people that are seeing this kind of stuff and are horrified. I don't know. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, well, I see where...
Not just, not just the district typing up the survey and handing it out.
I see what you're saying. The thing is that our policy is not going to preclude something like that from happening. It's just going to say, "We're not condoning it. We're not initiating it." That's all. But it's not going to preclude it from happening because it, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen down the line. Or if a kid goes onto a site, how do we know that? You know, I mean, we try to take all those precautions, but you never know what's going to happen. So you can't say absolute that this is not going to be what happens.
I'm not asking for...
But I think what you're saying, Nicole, is you, you want the district to say that we will not allow a third party or a vendor to come in and ask these questions.
And ask these questions.
We're talking about two separate issues.
Right. I, I think that sends the message that should something else happen on the sideline, this is not, we're not condoning it. We've already made it clear that we are not.
And we've already talked about that in our IT use agreement.
Okay.
You're talking about third-party.
Right. I don't particularly have an issue with that. I mean, we don't do it anywhere.
And we can make the policy more restrictive. We don't have to.
Right, right.
Anyway, it is, so there...
And I know you're not worried about it because you know we don't do it, but a lot of people are worried about it and they don't have the information that you do and they don't sit in that chair or have meetings with people on the inside knowing. They think it's happening everywhere, so...
I don't have a problem in saying that in the policy.
Okay.
I mean, the, the other piece of information here is the actual statute. And I mean, we have nothing to say about that. That's what's on statute.
No, this is the statute.
Right.
But we can, we can adjust our own policy to be a little bit tighter, correct?
Right.
Correct. We can, we can, we frame this a little bit. Now, one of the things, however, is the statute requires us to do an annual notification. Even if we're not going to provide any of those surveys, we still have to do the annual notification.
Right, right.
That, I want to make sure that that's understood.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with making it tighter if there's no reason, no important reason that anybody can think of why that would ever happen. And I'm hearing that there really isn't.
Right.
No reason why we would ever allow these questions to be asked.
And that's something that you all agree as a board. And I, as I'm looking at the list, I know that universities have done studies on voting history, for example, to see if kids vote with their parents, that kind of stuff. So if that's, if we just don't want to allow any of that, that's fine. Most of this, we wouldn't.
Are there, the only other thing I could think of is, are there any of, like, a social studies class or something where they do that kind of, that's a possibility?
And this says, "A teacher or school employee may not administer any survey either." And so that's the other issue, is making it clear to our teachers that they can't then go out and, and do that if we restrict these areas.
The annual notification, would that be a one-pager? Just a one-page, you know, this is notification, please sign here? Maybe we could have our policy on the back?
Aren't we already doing the notification thing in the, in the handbooks?
Well, we have that whole opt-out piece that we revamped a couple of years ago, so, which is part of the packet in any handbook, so... So on that, would we add a statement to, to this effect or would we have another whole opt-out? Well, I think we, I don't know if we want to look at what they look like, what others look like. I haven't, I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head if it would be a one-pager or not. So I think we would need to take a look at that and then we can certainly put the policy on the back.
I might suggest that maybe we, at the meeting, table this and then we can, I can go back with it again.
I think we have to. They would have to.
Because I would also give an opportunity to find out if there's any educational reason that people are doing surveys to talk about how, how do you decide who you vote for? And how, finding out how kids think about things, maybe the teachers are doing it in an educational setting that we don't know and we don't necessarily want to...
Stop them.
Stop them if there's a good reason why they're doing it. So, we don't know. I think those unintended consequences sometimes.
Yeah.
So is that issue tabled?
Well, no, we can't table it here, but we'll table it next meeting.
It's just a work session.
511 is the administering medication policy has a revision that allows a person to administer an anti-opioid agent for someone who's having an overdose with that line.
Doesn't it require us to do that? Isn't that what the statute is saying? Not just allowing, but requiring somebody in our district? Because that was originally why I had a problem with the bill. It required, it's like, who's going to pay for that training? Who's going to, what does that look like?
Yeah, I think it just says, "A person may administer,"
Okay.
"in accordance with our protocol and that if they do, in good faith, we're not liable for it."
Okay. Oh, I see.
It says "may," is the word that they say.
I thought when it was going through the House that it was a force thing, like the CPR thing.
It might have been. And 512, speaking of the CPR, this one is a revision to graduation requirements, again, as a revision in the revised statute 15-258. And what this does, on page three of the policy, adds two items. It is, allows the district to participate in the state seal by literacy so that students who have met those requirements can get a seal affixed to their diploma. And then the second part of this requires that we provide public school pupils with one or more sessions in cardiopulmonary resuscitation in an age-appropriate manner during high school. And that one must be implemented by July 1 of 2019.
Are we, are we actually doing this now? I don't, I didn't think so.
We are not right now.
By 2018?
2019, we have to, so...
Because the fire department does CPR classes and I think they have to pay for it.
And I think we can, and we, I think we can direct them there, if I remember correctly. And I think we can use tax credits also as part of the CPR, in the future. I think that was discussed as well. Anybody remember hearing about that?
And they can bring, they can go do it at the fire department and bring their card in and we would check them off.
Don't they, or they could do it in PE, couldn't they? Or as part of the, well, you know?
Well, I talked to Mr. Becker about that a little bit. And, you know, we, we would have to have, make sure our PE teachers were certified. And then, one of the things they were concerned about was purchasing the equipment, the dummies and all, everything that is involved. And that's quite expensive, so...
There are, there are a lot of third-party people that do that training as well, that you could bring in to do it, probably for less than what it would cost you to train staff and buy dummies.
That's exactly what we talked about.
The, the fire department does it, but the city's on the recover cost pick. And when you get to that recover cost point with the city, I think it's 40 or 50 bucks to certify out now.
You know, you know, that's something that we can put on our agenda for the city when we meet with them. And just talk about that and we'll kind of, maybe we can work something into the IGA.
Into the IGA. And as I recall, and I don't know, Brad, we talked about this, that if we do it in the school through physical education, it doesn't have to be a certified CPR instructor. It's really about the, the skills that are appropriate in CPR. So that was one of the areas that we'll be working on in the curriculum areas, what would an appropriate instruction look like if we were to do it, say, in freshman PE?
So the kids don't have to be certified, is what you're saying?
No, but I think the instructor doesn't have to be either, which is...
Helpful.
Yeah. Because it just says one or more training sessions somehow.
Oh, so it doesn't say they have to be totally certified, but it's probably...
We need to look this up and...
We have one person who is.
Yes.
Did, for Mr. Washington, but we've initiated the discussion, so we have some ideas of where we're going to go with this. The city gets to know that, you know? That'd be great to know.
Okay. On 5 dot 13, this is the administrative performance plan, pay, pay, home, it's pay. And we are going to request that the board table this item at this meeting. We went through and discovered that there is an inaccurate reference to the statute. Item 5.14 is the capital plan that we move the city to the facilities board. As, as you know, we aren't planning any capital projects, but we do need to include the ADM projections and enrollment information.
I don't really understand this. Because I'm looking at it and it's like, everything's the same number and it's all zero.
It's over a period of use.
It's what?
It's over a period of use. We use the same number we use for our budget for this year because we're not planning any new construction of schools.
Oh, I see.
That's what they're asking us for. It's an annual report. It says the first day of school, first of all, which was 5450, and then if you use the ADM technology, it's the 1516, basically, it has a date number.
But I'm seeing ADM 2005, it's the sixth, but am I reading the one that...
P36.
2556, that's for 17, then you want to disclose for 18. Is that what you're asking, Joe?
Yeah.
It goes down to year 26.
Right.
So will you just use the same number because there's not another number? Every year we've been declining, so you're not going to go and say for the next 25 years or whatever, 20 years?
Preschool through six, all right.
Then just use the same.
Yeah. And every year we just update that to put up the number we use. So it's an annual report, so they, they just want to know in the next five years are you planning to construct any new schools? And if so, they need to set their budget up accordingly too. And we don't, right now, have a need for increasing the work footage for schools.
So essentially, this shows that we aren't growing, so we don't need to have any capital profits.
Correct.
And we are estimating this decline, so we have for the 7th and 8th grade, we're anticipating 862, and for 912 is 1806, so we just keep that at the end and just figure that, there's no calculation that would then provide us capital dollars for, for facility dollars for that. Am I correct in this? Item 5 dash 15 is the agreement with PCG, Public Consulting Group, and this is in relation to the Medicaid claiming program. So they provide that service to claim the reimbursements for them. This is the contract. Anything to do with Medicaid, Medicaid is lengthy. 5 dash 16 is our policy on gifts and donations. And based on a recommendation from the audit firm, we are recommending some additional language on crowdsourcing to be added as we do have some of our, our teachers and staff who are using crowdsourcing. And so the changes in this basically define what crowdsourcing is and, and confirm that regardless of how you acquire your gift or donation, it still goes through the same policy or process as any other donation or gift. Excuse me. Then there's an exhibit that gives some information about the purpose and definition. It gives some procedures and also provides a form that would allow staff to complete, particularly if they're looking at a technology donation. And we have had some of those.
Which they do, like through donor choice.
Yes.
Good, good.
5 dot 17 is a request for the board to approve an RFP to be issued. And this one is for our beverage contract, vending machine service. And I know this was provided electronically because of the length of it. Excuse me. And so, in the, in the, I'm trying to remember the numbers, I missy could do this better, but we can do oral quotes up to a certain level and then written quotes to the next level. And then, once it goes about, beyond that, we do a request for proposals, sealed bid process. And so the board has to provide approval to go forward with what's about to exist.
Once that language is approved?
Pardon me?
So once that language is approved, does that get published anywhere or does it just go into the bid pool system?
The language of the...
Mm-hmm. How are, how are we going to, after we approve the language, how are we actually going to go request the bid or request the proposal?
You mean, where does it go?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, we can put it, we have newspaper sources, we put it out locally, there's on our website. And we also receive a number of vendors who want to know if there's ever this type of bid and we send it out to all of them, what we call like a bid list. And we've got a lot of vendors that request to be on that. So there's a number of areas that we put this in.
So, so this would be published in the local newspaper in the legal, like the city?
Actually, it's not the local newspaper.
Kingman Daily.
It's the Kingman Daily, minor, and that was determined by...
Perfect. So Arizona procurement law says it has to be advertised in the newspaper of the county seat center. So it would, it's procurement law and it has to be advertised in the...
So there's nothing stopping us, though, from putting it in the local newspaper?
No. You could do that in addition to. However, most of them are very aware of the program. We have a lot of local people that have put bids in it before.
Just thought process? Just my thought process?
Yeah, no, no, no. That's, it's, it's a good question. But like I said, they're all pretty well-conditioned, especially if you're a vendor, you always want to find out how you can get that business. So over the years, they've all, and like I said, most of them are on the bid list. But we do put it out there and we, we do publicize it in there.
Yeah, on our district website, on the left-hand side, there's the bids and proposals. It's listed there.
it's listed there.
Item 5.18 is also related to Medicaid and this one is the contract for the billing services. You'll notice there is a little bit of change in the informational items section, which starts your blue pages. And one of the areas that we've talked about a little bit is we get requests for information and if they're given to individuals, not everybody gets to see the information. And so for some of the items, what we decided to do is bring them forward as a report to the board for information so that it's public information, it's posted on the website with the agenda. Anybody, whoever wants to go back and reference it again, it's there. So the first area for this next meeting is our transportation report. And what this is, is a list of the district vehicles that we own, and equipment, and all the mowers and so forth, equipment. And it gives you the information, actually their ID number, what year they were purchased, what mileage they currently have on them, if that's applicable, so that you can see what we currently own.
It's a great idea.
And the second information item, and this came out of all of the things that have come up in confusion around adjacent ways, is, and we don't have the backup here yet, but this will be information on the projects that we have completed using the school facilities board funding, so they're not things that we have funded, and also those that were funding with adjacent ways, which are restricted to us. So people can see, these are the projects we're doing, here's how they were funded. So that will be available next week.
I see we're still keeping the 1974 dump truck going.
Yeah, yeah. We were talking about putting it in the...
Right.
Why don't we get a historical license, even pushing it?
I remember that from the last bond of presentations they did and I was like, really? We still have this?
We still have it. We have magic mechanics.
Oh, we do.
And that is our agenda.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the agenda?
Not on the agenda, but since the paper's not here and it's a work session, I think I just want to make it really clear in front of everybody that Roger should not be politicking inside the district office, asking people to vote for him and passing out business cards. I know you don't want to look at me, but it's illegal and we had an issue with it last time and it should not happen at all. So I just thought I would say that with the paper not here. Right? No paper here. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. No updates or announcements? Give them a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion when you adjourn.
Second.
Pat Burney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Roger Schmann?
Yes.
Nancy Iannone?
Yes.
Joan Navarreta?
Yes.